Let's call tonight's meeting to order. Would you all please rise and as we recite the allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I don't, we did not have any visitors checked in and I don't have any introductions. So I'll read the college mission statement. Dodge City Community College will provide opportunities for high-quality learning and will enhance community and personal development in a student-centered environment. And I would ask Ms. Tama to present to the board and the people. We had a bad incident on campus and would you please talk to us about it?
Okay, thank you Chairman. We did have a student by the name of DeMarcus Tinsley who was involved in a very serious accident on campus, probably the most serious that I ever remember on campus. I am speaking to you tonight with the direct permission from his family. And they wanted to first of all, express to all the board and all the members of the campus community their gratitude and thanks for the number of phone calls, cards, donations, things like that, that have come towards the family. DeMarcus Tinsley was driving a vehicle on campus heading westbound over by the tech center and his vehicle went off of the road and hit a gooseneck trailer through the hitch. And it severed the top of the car off and he sustained some extensive head injuries and was knocked unconscious in the accident. He was transported immediately to our hospital where he received first care and then transported to Wesley Medical Center where he remains in intensive care. He is stable. We speak with the family about every day, sometimes twice a day. And he has sustained since then, a total of three major surgeries. The first one was eye surgery to repair damage to one of his eyes. The next surgery was to help with his breathing passages. And then the third surgery was very extensive. It was to reconstruct, facial reconstruction. And they're reporting that all of those have been very successful and they are slowly bringing him out of sedation. And he, this is a great news. Just recently, as of yesterday and today, he is responding. He's not yet able to speak, but he's able to nod his head, yes and no, and he's able to squeeze hands when they ask questions. And that is tremendous. That's great progress. He still has a long road ahead of him. And I know our campus community will continue to support the family. We do have two ways that donations are going to the benevolent fund. One is through the business office and the other is through the foundation. And both of those are on social media. If anyone has any questions, they can call me or other people on the campus, either the foundation, Christina, or they can call the business office if they need any further information. But if you're so inclined, we would recommend that you continue to support the family. And if you're so inclined, please say prayers. They welcome prayers.
Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, one other quick announcement, if I may. Right in front of you, this is late breaking news. We're very happy, I think you received an email to notify you of the selection this year of our distinguished alumnus. Some of you may recognize his name. It is the Honorable Bruce T. Gatterman. Chief Judge Gatterman was born in Lewis, Kansas, not too far from here. And then he attended Dodge City Community College where he received an associate's degree. And he got his degree in 1973. And after that, he went on to Kansas State University and then to Washburn University where he obtained a law degree in 1978. He's served with a lot of distinction in the law field since that time. And he has an extensive bio here, let me try that again, a bio. And so if you are so inclined, you might want to read all that. And he was inducted into Phi Theta Kappa here, so I know he was a very good student. And I just had a chance today to look at his grades and they're remarkable. He has some wonderful stories about traveling on the basketball team when he was here. And back in those days, he said, "They traveled in two station wagons." And one of his coaches was Eldon Becker. And all of you know Eldon Becker. And so he has quite the stories about Coach Becker. I think he will be very entertaining at the luncheon. And so you'll all get an invitation and encourage anyone to attend that. And I think you will like to hear his stories that he very fondly shares about his days at Dodge City Community College. But it is our great honor to say that he's our distinguished alumnus. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tama. And we do extend our most sincere, you know, hopes and prayers to DeMarcus and his family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And we'll now ask if anybody in the audience would like to address the board if they can do so at this time. And seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes and I'll entertain a motion when we're ready.
There's a couple corrections.
Okay.
Over on executive sessions, I know that this is just the auto correct doing it, but, or maybe not, maybe it's the word we want in there, but under executive sessions, well, we don't have page numbers.
Are you on the minutes?
I'm on minutes.
Okay, okay.
A, it says the college attorney recommends the board recess into excessive session. And I'm sure that is a correct.
Could've been right.
It's repeated on the next several pages, so excessive session. Just need to correct that one word, or maybe it should remain.
Sorry.
It's on the March 26th.
I breezed right over that.
Maybe on the extended ones, it should be excessive.
Okay, duly noted.
Yes, the auto correct.
It was, but I thought maybe we should correct it anyway. Is there any other additions or corrections for the minutes? Motion to approve as revised or corrected.
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Same on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Okay, completion of the agenda. So we have the two additional items. Any other revisions to the agenda?
The additions? I would like to add a motion to add to the agenda, placing on the agenda for next month, the elimination of the helicopter flight obstruction program.
So you want that placed on this month's agenda?
The motion to add it.
To this, this agenda?
Yeah, this.
Okay.
Today or next month? You said next month.
Well, to discuss and to take action on next month. But it's not on the agenda, so make a motion to add it to the agenda.
Okay, that will require a vote of trustees to add that to the agenda?
Yeah, second.
There's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Aye. Okay, motion failed. Any revisions to the consent agenda? Okay, do we have approval of the agendas as presented? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move on to reports to trustees, so Student Government Association. So Ms. Armendaris, you have it.
Good evening Board of Trustees, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Nolte. It is so good to see you back, Ms. Kathy, by the way.
Thank you.
I can't believe it's my last meeting before I graduate. I hope you guys are as nervous as I am for that. But I'm really excited. I can't believe it's gone too fast, way too fast. But it has been great, 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 long years, for sure. So let's go, let's go ahead and start with choir. They're preparing for a recital for the 25th this week. They have another concert on the 28th and the 29th. Their mural, they've been working on it and will be painted a week after the concert. PTK had to cancel their car wash due to the weather, which has been kind of crazy lately. But they are planning on teaming up with International Club to fix that up and get more help. Because car washes are really hard to remember for International Club last year. You need quite a few, a lot of people for that. But it's always fun. They're also, they were doing a presentation for the Leadership Dodge here at the board meeting last Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00. And it was hosted by the CLDP program. PTK is also doing a national day of prayer for Monday, the 29th, and Sunday, May 5th. They have a list of churches and pastors they want to invite and help them out to lead. And I believe they talked to you, Mr. Ryan, about that, or I hope they're going, trying to get a hold of you of it. The International Club is planning to have a car wash, or they plan to have one the 20th. The same thing happened with the weather. They're also doing community service for Earth Day by cleaning the Highway 50 on the 27th. The cosmetology department, they have a six, they had a successful Krispy Kreme doughnut fundraiser. I think they sold about over 600 dozens. So that's amazing. I know, those girls are good at saying. They were open Saturday, 14th, 13th, I mean, for prom, for high school prom here. They did from 9:00 to 1:00 p.m. They did makeovers for girls, did their makeup, their hair, and I thought that was something really nice for them. So the girls from the high school can get more experience here at the college without even being part of it yet. The STEM program currently are working on some glow forge projects and building a wind turbine. I don't know how, but they will. They are planning a trip to National Weather Services off in Dodge City. And will try to have another star party at the end of this month. They are planning to join us, Student Government, on Carnival Day with the fun activity they're coming up with. Quiz Bowl went for three, four, went three, four on day of the state tournament with MOWE going three for three on a Bible bonus. And on the 12th and on the 14th, they went cons. And they got fourth place and finished at the state tournament. They also took home the Colin Matt's Sportsmanship Trophy for the third straight year. MOWE was third in individual scoring and Lou Scovian was fifth. The nursing department is moving forward, sorry, I know this, this month has been pretty long. They're moving forward with their second annual, the Price is Right fundraiser. Their current sponsors so far, DC YMCA, Parrot Co., Western Plains Medical Complex, Victory Electric, DC Dental, Hair by Amber, Fat Cat Tattoo, and Southside Liquor. They are still collecting small raffle prizes and will put them together in prize packages. They are planning to sell 200 tickets, 20 each for, throughout May, along with the drawing being held on their meeting, which is the 26th, and are planning to go Facebook Live for that. Eighty percent of their profit will be used for scholarships and educational experiences and the other 20 will be donated to either Circle of Hope or Airhead West in here in town. They will be finishing planning the nursing pinning ceremony, voted to present each nursing graduate with the red rose as they have the past years. And last but not least, Student Government, we had a movie night at the 10th, I mean, this month, just a bunch of fun activities. We had to postpone a few due to weather, as always. And we had a fun Easter event yesterday at the Student Union, actually. It went pretty fun. We had students come by and do some, we had an egg race, I'm pretty sure you guys have done that back and forth. And that was a bit messy, but it was fun. We are also doing a kite flying this weekend. Carnival is coming up. Hope to see you guys there, that's always fun. And our last event might be the blood drive. And we're planning to end this year fun and hope we don't end up with many tears, but I'm excited to see you guys next Saturday, for sure. And before I end, I, it's not my, I'm pretty sure it's not my last meetings with you guys, but, because I wouldn't, or else I'd be crying already. I just want to say that I don't think I would have made so many great memories and met so many great people because, if it wasn't for this college. So I thank you guys so much. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee report, so trustee Malone, we'll start with you.
I don't have any.
Okay, First Jean.
I think it's interesting that we have had some extra publicity across the nation because April is Community College Month. And there are some nice stories in some of the papers about, again, the things we know about community colleges. And I wanted to tell the Student Government Association and the International Club and the Quiz Bowl team about all their accomplishments and we are really proud of what they've done during the year. And they need to know that we appreciate that. And I was trying to remember what to tell Kathy, the bookstore sponsored gift baskets to send to the Farm Bureau in Nebraska for the awful times they're having on flooding. And that was such a good gesture to send to the neighbors, so I was really proud of that. And also, the art show on sale is coming up, and that's always a wonderful time. And I'm proud that the city is recognizing our construction classes with the Chad Open House. They've done that before. And that's good for the community to be aware of that. And Alexis Warres is the featured artist at the Second Avenue final Friday. So congratulations to Alexis. A lot of great things going on here. We should all be proud of. Thank you.
Well, my thunder was stolen, so I don't have a report, Mr. Chairman.
You can say that.
Dr. Breston.
I don't have anything specific to report, but I just want to wish the graduates the best and we're all very proud of the work and the things that they're going on doing. I unfortunately won't be able to be at graduation, so I wanted to take that, my little opportunity here to wish them the best and their congratulations.
Kathy?
I wanted to, first of all, tell everyone at the community college and in the community and you trustees, thank you very much for your support and your love during this hard time that our family's gone through. And it meant a lot. So thank you.
We had a good curriculum meeting today with the music department and Jane. It went quite well. I've been visiting some with some of the folks in the arts, Jennifer Nolan especially, visiting her for a while. And I've been visiting out in the community concerning the helicopter program. And I've only found six people who are in favor of it and they're at this table. So I think we ought to take the wishes of our community a little bit more to heart.
And then I have next to report, I was going to do is Jeremy, just really just applaud our graduates and best wishes to them as they go ahead in the path in the future. So very proud of them all. So on the other reports, any of the vice presidents want to address some of the reports they have? Any additional comments or?
Jamie, did you tell them about our STEM students?
Our STEM program, the LSAM with K-State, four of our students have been accepted for their research project for the summer. It's very competitive and it's quite an honor. Some of the other participants only have one, really two people or none who are participating. So I think it's very exciting. And a credit to our science faculty, especially Jerry Curtis, who proceeds that area. Did you want to add?
We did have one student accepted, shared.
We also had a former, a fellow, Carmen Del Real, who's been accepted to KU, she's a participant in the STEM program as well.
Very good, very good. Nothing else, so we'll move on to board action items. So first off, number A. Oh, sorry.
President.
Well, thank you, Dr. Breston.
I just wanted, I gave handouts to everyone, I just want you to be aware of it. There's about 50 of us involved in it and it says step by step, building a community and college enrollment plan. I've done this at my last two community colleges, but just kind of a traveler's guide to how to build enrollment. And, you know, our job as community college individuals are to make sure that we recruit and we recruit well. And that we also, then we also educate, retain, and then graduate. And thanks to our marketing department and other groups, we're doing, as far as our recruiting and others, I think we're doing a really good job. It's amazing, it was fun today, just for example. I don't know what grade that group was today, but I saw one of our recruiters taking a group of, it looked like eighth graders. And I mean, it was a whole lot of them, by the way. And so it's fun to see that, that activity that we're doing. Because you know, eighth graders are thinking about where they're going to go to college and things like that. And then yesterday, we had an enrollment day and this room was packed with students and parents and things like that. And they actually allowed me to come in and visit with them. So this is kind of fun. But it's just, I love this part, this time of year. Obviously graduation's coming up pretty quickly. I love, you know, part of it is, as a college president, you love to see, you love the first day of school and you love the last day of school and all that in between. But part of it is, is I, it's just, we've got a good group of students, we've got a very smart group of students. It's amazing to go out and talk to different groups. I know that Chris and I are going on the road tomorrow to go for donors. And so it's just exciting. We also just got through, thanks to Andrea and others, we just got through doing a video of all the four components. We had the city, the city manager, the county manager, myself and Dr. Dirksen, all did kind of talk about where we are and working together. And so it's nice that we're doing that and it's nice that we all get along really well. And so part of, part of my goal is to make sure that we're, that we get together and work together as a unit. And that's going to, that's going to strengthen the community also. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. That was impromptu, but it's. Did well? Okay, so first up, item A, the Kenren. So Dr. Forgie.
First, let me thank Mike Webster for his work and research on this and he has seen the job. This will enable the college to go from a 200 megabyte dot broadband internet service to a one gigabyte. And this will meet our needs for years to come, but it'll make it five times faster than what we are currently getting. But not only that, we are going to be saving about $1,000 a month. So about $12,000 a year if I go into Kenren. And it mentions the healthcare connect funding in here, which is helps to subsidize that to the college. And that is because the college offers healthcare, nursing supplies and everything that makes us qualify for those funding.
So what about reliability and assurances there?
I'm going to defer to Michael. I don't think that's an issue. I think Kenren's pretty.
Absolutely. And Johnson Community College actually has been on Kenren, on the broadband network for now for several years. And the last four years in a row, they've reported 100% uptime. Usually the goal is hit 5.9, 79.99%. So the fact that they've been up for three or four years at 100% is phenomenal.
I noticed on the third page of the report, you know, I noticed on the first page, it says that it's going to cost us for the one gigabyte, $1,526. But then I look over on the third page and it says all services are $3,138. Is that different?
Well, that does not take into consideration the subsidy.
Right.
Yeah. So once you take that 65% subsidy that we get, that reduces it down to the lower amount.
And we can't get that from AT&amp;T, so.
No, it has to come through Kenren.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Dr. Forgie, room and board rates.
We are proposing an increase of about 2% over the previous year. Those rates are attached on the subsequent document. The reason that we are going up is that we refinanced one of the residential halls, I guess the church hall, a couple of years ago. Was it Becker?
I wasn't here, but I believe it was Becker.
Excuse me, Jackson.
Okay.
But we refinanced that a couple of years ago. And we've only been paying interest on that the last two years of about $133,000. But this coming year, in FY 1920, we'll start paying principal on that. And so that is an additional $185,000 that the, that needs to come out as the, it's a capital fund, but the housing fund to pay for that. So we feel like a 2% increase, of which is again, lower than the Cost of Living Index that has been published by the Department of Labor. So we think that that's a reasonable rate that will, that will provide sufficient amount of income to cover that additional principal cost for that renovation refinance.
Dr. Forgie, what's the drop in number of students during the spring semester as opposed to fall?
I don't know that I have that information handy, but we certainly can get that to you.
Typically, we drop about 12%, 10 to 12% in typical years. But it can go up depending on if we change a head coach in a major sport such as football or if we have a high number of transfers that go D1. Would you agree, Jake? Yeah. Right. It just, it just, that's usually when we have anomalies in the 10 to 12% and it goes beyond that. That's usually what the occurrence is.
How many do we have total in the spring?
In the spring, probably.
I mean, I'm sorry, I've said that wrong.
Pardon me?
In the fall semester. How many, how many do we have in the fall occupied?
This year?
An average.
Okay, an average. Margarita, you want to?
So in the fall, we traditionally use all four buildings and we are at capacity. So it's anywhere between 350 to 370.
So 350 to 370 is what she's saying.
Okay, thank you.
And that's fall, when we open. And we normally have all buildings open. And then in the spring, we drop. And so you want to give for this spring? We've closed Coleman Web.
So for this spring, we have closed Coleman Web and we did transition head coaches. And so we did see, this is one of those anomaly years. We are currently at 268, which is about 50 less than what we normally have.
Thank you.
And that's pretty typical when we change a head coach. One of the things that I will do at the next board meeting is I plan to bring our full enrollment reports and our full occupancy reports. So we'll have the stats that we normally provide. So that's going to be in May, when we finish the semester and we know exactly where we were at.
And that's very typical in all community colleges and universities.
But as you know, this was a lower enrollment year than what we typically have. And so we're tracking it very closely, day to day now. Mike Webster was able to set us up on a new system where, I think it was beginning April 19th.
25th.
Uh huh?
25th.
Twenty-fifth, okay, so two, two more days. Then we will have, for the first time ever that I know of, uh, day-to-day comparisons on where we were at this time last year, and we'll be able to not have to wait till the end of the month, or different times of the semester, to know where we're at. It's almost like real-time enrollment. So we're looking forward to that, and, uh, like the president mentioned yesterday, we did have a very good enrollment day, so our initial signs are good. We're gonna keep it up, we're keeping the pedal to the metal.
And Trusty Malone, that's, that's exactly why we're starting to do enrollment plans, enrollment management plans.
Yep.
'Cause I, that, you know, everybody's, everybody's, I don't care who you are, uh, from, from janitor to, to president, you are a recruit, but I, I can promise you, my, my daughter does not like to go to Walmart with me because I'm, I'm trying to, I'm trying to recruit. And, you know, and, and that's what we all need to be doing, a lot of us are doing that, and so it's amazing the stories you hear, and, uh, I, you know, Carla just had one student come in a while ago, earlier, about an hour ago, that was looking for the cosmetology building, 'cause she wants to get into cosmetology, so it's amazing, and part of our jobs are, is to get that student in the right place. And, you know, you know how friendly it is in certain places, like, you know, you can go into restaurants or places that you feel real comfortable, and you wanna go because people are treating you right, and so we need to make sure we're doing that. And that's, as you recruit, and then as you retain those students, I mean, we want them all to do well and graduate and move on and do great things. Thank you for asking that question, though.
Yeah.
Any more questions for Dr. Forgie? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Move on to the, uh, Great Western Dining Donation, and then just roll that into the food service agreement, if you would.
Okay. Um, each year, I get the college receives a donation from Great Western, uh, for the discretion of the board to use in college, so deemed, and it has been used to, uh, help in student improvements in furniture and equipment. I just received a $5,000 donation. Uh, regarding the contract, um, I mentioned yesterday, I happen to have known the previous CFO at, uh, Garden City very well, and it's my understanding that the contract that Dodge City was getting was, uh, not nearly as good as the one that Garden City was getting. And I brought that to the attention of, uh, of our, uh, Great Western representative, and so we are getting a much better rate this year.
We have a better chef.
Well, we do have a better chef, we have a much better cooking staff here, and, uh, I have to work out almost every day to, uh, keep the weight off from eating there some of it.
And we appreciate you keeping up the connections with the other folks.
But, uh, one of the main things, we were on a flat rate here, nine dollars and ninety-six cents, and we're gonna go to a sliding scale, so, uh, kinda related to the, uh, question about students in residential halls as we're on a meal plan. Uh, if we are at two hundred and ninety-five, let's say, at Trusty Malone, this next year, the college will pay nine dollars and forty-three cents per student versus nine dollars and ninety-six cents, so we're saving about fifty cents a meal, uh, if, if we have that many, which we had that many during that range last year. Uh, so that's a significant decline, uh, in cost savings to the college in that rate. We also were able to negotiate some other items, uh, some are sliding scales well, and, we also increased our commission rate, I notice, I happen to remember that, uh, Garden was getting a little bit higher commission rate than we were, so, uh, anyway, we, uh, are getting a much better deal this year than, uh, in previous years. Where they wanted to go up on the contract, we actually ended going down on the contract, so.
So they were proposing?
Oh, they were proposing an increase.
About two, it was higher than the CPI.
Pardon?
It was higher than the CPI.
Uh, it was like two point eight percent, and I just laughed at them, you know? Said, no.
Okay. He's a tough negotiator, by the way. Thank you for going to bat for the schools. So any further questions for Dr. Forgie on either one of these two items?
Well, there's a term I didn't understand, under guarantee of rates and charges on that last, I think it's the last page, probably. Not, not quite the last page, but I'm not sure that I know what the food away from home means. It's on the, the assignment page.
It's typical.
I think it's on this one.
When athletic teams go to, when the athletic teams go off to, uh, another question?
Well, it's, uh, there is a consumer, you're talking about the Consumer Price Index, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, yes.
There is a, there is a rate that they consider for, there's different rates when you go out there in Department of Labor, and, um, I, I just use the, just regular rural CPI. They use the food away from home, which doesn't take into consideration, um, um, different factors, and you'd have to get into the Bureau of Labor Statistics to see, you know, which factors they use as far as, what factors, uh, or costs that they include, living at home versus away from home.
Okay.
Uh, and that's kind of what that is, uh, but you're kinda getting deep into the wood, weeds if we, and I've really never gone out to analyze it to see, but that's the difference, there's, there's several different rates. There's a rural rate, CPI rate, there's an urban rate for urban index, there's a rate for, again, uh, food away from home, and, um, so that's, that's kind of what that's referring to.
It looked like it was related to the Kansas City area, so I just didn't understand the terminology there.
But we will continue to kinda hold their feet to the fire about as far as, they say not more than the Consumer Price Index, and, uh, I think that any additional increases in future years, we might be able to keep it probably much lower than that.
Okay. So.
I'd move to accept item C, the Great Western Dining Donation, and item D, the Great Western Dining Food Service Agreement.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll move on to the leases of the roof, roof roof buses.
The college has tried out a, these turtle top vans, went out for two, three months?
Uh, we're on second, we're almost in, we're almost in third.
And, uh, uh, remember, we showed you pictures of those, uh, vehicle vehicles, and, uh, they're much safer, the roof on those are much safer, they still, uh, are, uh, able to be driven by someone that does not have a CDL, so our, our coaches can drive them if, if necessary. Um, so we went out and decided to go ahead and extend the leases on those for two of these vehicles. Um, the lower bid was from Kansas Trucking Equipment, and we are recommending, uh, to go with, with them for the lease of these vehicles pending and contingent upon, uh, approved attorney language for the lease. We wanna make sure that, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've, we've taken a first look, right?
Yeah, I think we, and there were some issues, but we wanted to make sure that, that before we actually sign it, we will make sure that, uh, Mr. Curbs approves the language of the lease.
Okay. So the motion that you would want is to approve contingent upon?
Attorney approval of the lease language.
Gotcha, okay.
Dr. Forgie, as far as the, what's stipulated in all those in the request for bids on that, are they all equivalent as far as warranties, maintenance, I mean, as far as what's covered, what's not covered across all of those?
That's...
It's a pretty significant difference, that's the reason I asked.
Well, that, yeah.
Big difference in cost there, so I just wanna make sure we're getting the same product.
Uh, I'm going to defer to, uh, Justice, Justin on that, and I'll let him kinda, I think there were some differences, and he can detail maybe where those were.
As far as specifically on the lease of the commercial buses, um, I believe where one of the biggest differences in cost comes into play in this scenario is that Kansas Truck has taken the opportunity to more or less lease us the vehicle for the cost of what they believe it's gonna depreciate in the time that we would have, so the three-year lease, um, because it listed specifically in their bid where there's going to be return value, and so they're taking into account that that vehicle's gonna have value after we're done with the lease, and so we're, I believe that's where some of the cost have offset from what we were seeing in some of those other, uh, lease agreements, as far as that. As far as the serviceability and maintenance across all of those vehicles, they were all comparable as far as what was being offered, and the majority of it was that it continued, I mean, we were gonna get new vehicles all the way across and in those, so we were automatically gonna get the bumper-to-bumper warranties that come with any brand new vehicle, uh, and the services were all comparable across as far as what was gonna be provided. So I, that, that's where I believe that the biggest cost savings come into play in this scenario.
Thanks, Justin.
Do these buses have the extra rollover protection and the built-in?
Yes, they, uh, specifically listed in the bid on this specific vehicle was that it had a, I'm trying to remember the exact wording, but I believe it was a carbon steel reinforced cage, and so it, it does have that additional rollover, uh, protection along with being a duly-vehicle, which means it helps in the stability of the vehicle.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion to approve?
Um...
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Uh, the suburban leases?
Um, we've got, currently we've got, uh, four passenger vans, and, uh, what we're going to do is replace two of those vans with Suburbans. Uh, we went out, different bids for different options. The Lewis Chevrolet, uh, for cost-saving purposes, we recommend is the two-wheel-drive option. Uh, there could be, uh, especially in the wintertime, uh, there could be some savings, I mean, not some savings, but additional, uh, safety factors if we went with the four-wheel drive option, uh, and that was kind of discussed a little bit in yesterday's workshop, so, uh, that, you know, that was the only reason we went with the two-wheel option, was just for the, uh, the, a little bit of cost savings. But when you look at it over, I think it's, you know, the thirty-six month period of time, I think it's only like seven hundred and twenty dollars difference, if I calculated it correctly, so, you know, if the board chooses to go with the four-wheel option, then we might be able to go back to the dealership and see if they would lease us, uh, those four-wheel-drive vehicles at the same rate as the two-wheel.
I think in that, we asked about when the, these vehicles would typically be used, and a lot of it would be spring, where the weather is, as we see unpredictable, so there was concern about just, uh, safety. So, uh, staff is, is recommending the two-wheel drive, I believe because we are replacing a two-wheel-drive version currently.
Vans.
Vans, and so we'll leave that up to the board to decide if they think there's additional safety to be had in the Ford do it or not.
Is, Lyndon, is the additional seven hundred and twenty dollars, that's not per month, that's in the total.
No, no, that's the total, it's just, if you look here, it's just, it's just about thirty dollars a month.
Yeah, seven eleven.
Yeah, so...
It's thirty, thirty-one dollars a month.
The greater safety for our students becomes important to me, so that's what I would say to the board.
And then there was some, some comments that if the weather was inclement, we shouldn't be driving any, anyway, but we know that we get out there, and it's, a lot of time it's the weather between here and there that surprises us too, so, safety is a concern.
If our students are going to a community college in Iowa, the weather between here and Iowa can be dramatically different.
So is that a motion to approve?
It is a motion to approve the four-wheel-drive Suburbans.
From, from Lewis Chevy?
From Lewis Chevrolet.
Okay. Do I have a second for that motion?
I was thinking that one.
A second to that one? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Okay, move on to the lease, the car leases, the Malibus?
Yes, and we're doing all these leases, uh, try to get them all on the same timeframe, so that they'll all come due at the same time. Um, and so these are, uh, we went out and asked for bid on different vehicles, uh, we're currently utilizing eight, uh, but, uh, in any way, we are asking for the board to approve the lease of seven, uh, Chevrolet Malibu from Lewis Chevrolet.
I move approval of this second margin.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, Fidelity State Bank Certification?
Uh, the Minister of our, uh, uh, flexible spending account and other medical reimbursements has, uh, declined from signing our, our checks, uh, and so they have, uh, asked for Dodge City Community College personnel, Dr. Mead and Jessica West, to be the signers, Fidelity Bank, and this, this is, uh, agenda item is making that decision.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, uh, does EBMS tell you the amount to sign, uh, to send, is that what they do?
The individual checks, yes.
Okay, and so the only thing we're doing here is changing, who's going to?
Authorize, authorize signature on the checks.
But not, when EBS says send X number of dollars, we're, we're not, we're gonna dispute that, we'll just send the check.
It's, it's usually, uh, a medical reimbursement claim or something like that, that the person has filed, and then just to sign off.
So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, now the health employee benefit renewal.
Yes, we met with Brian Hillier, our, our representative, last week, the committee did, the committee decided to, uh, stay with the same rates and coverage that we had last year. We, I think we have a, a sufficient reserve balance to satisfy any stop-loss claims or anything like that, so, uh, no changes for the, for the staff. What we do plan to do, and we have done at other institutions, is to show on a, like a letter of employment, or their salary and their benefits, so that they kind of get a total compensation package, uh, so that they know that they're getting, uh, what, you know, what, what they would have paid, you know, for the insurance.
Right, and now this one has the health savings plan option.
Yes, and we are starting this year, uh, this is something new, a health savings account, uh, this is at no cost to the college, this kind of works like an IRA, if you're familiar with the health savings account, it will allow, uh, the individual, if they so choose, uh, to participate and, uh, put into a health savings account. One of the things the college had to do was to offer a third higher-rate option, or high-deductible option, so, uh, so your deductible, it's, there may be like five thousand dollars, it maybe went to seventy-five hundred, uh, but that's, you know, that's the choice you get to make, and so nobody's required to participate in this, it's all voluntary, but, uh, one of the things about the health savings accounts, you can roll those over year to year for a flexible spending account, you know, it's, it's kind of limited to that specific fiscal year, and if you don't use everything, then you lose it. Uh, the health savings account, you can contribute up to sixty-nine hundred dollars for a family for a flexible spending account, I think it's around twenty-six fifty, so this is just an additional benefit that we are providing to the staff, if they wanna take advantage of it.
Okay, that's just, uh, information, how's your committee composed? Does it have quite a, I mean, have staff, faculty, staff also?
Yes, uh, yes, we had a member from the, uh, the Health Department... Yes, we had a member from the health department, our nursing department, and we had athletics, because we have a lot of staff in athletics. Yes, Chris is on it.
Faculty.
Faculty, yeah, we should help, yeah, yeah, yes.
Closing them too.
Yes. Our representatives, staff.
There's a representative from the hourly staff, the salary staff, faculty administration.
I visited with Brian Little Hillier a little bit yesterday, he said, he said it's almost unheard of that this is three years in a row without an increase, and so...
Well, we had, in looking at our claims this year, we had a very good year. We did not have very many claims that went over the threshold, so...
Your stop-loss usually not a lot of challenge, most people.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Dr. Fordy. Move on to IJ, from Staima, we'll do board policy to attend.
Okay, we're bringing this back for the final reading, and I would turn it over to the chair of the committee.
The governance committee recommends that we do as presented to the board at the first reading, we did take into consideration trustee Malone's ideas and thoughts, but we are bringing it to the board as presented in the first reading.
Okay. Any comments or discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. On K, women's head, head golf coach and academic advisor.
So you all received this at last month's board meeting, which we actually realized we did more than we needed to, but, so this is the second draft, even though we didn't need to do that. But it's all right. So we took back your comments and criticisms in regard to the suggestion for counseling. So if you look at the preferred qualifications, I did add in there a background in counseling or higher education, but otherwise, that was the only feedback we had really received, and so that is what we will advertise online unless there's anything else.
Thanks for taking in our recommendation. Any questions for Mr.? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Item L, the CNA classes, Dot City High School, Brian.
As you see in the, in the recommendation sheet, consideration form, we have a growing need for CNA courses at Dot City High School, and that's been ongoing now for a few, a few years, but coupled that with a lack of, lack of space, we just weren't able to accommodate because of that first barrier of space. So one day at the high school, we were in a meeting, Director Haley and I, and all of a sudden, we got an epiphany, and we were like, well, with the new construction, maybe we can hold the classes at Dot City High School. So we approached Principal Feist, and a couple of rooms that they were previously using were no longer being occupied due to new space that they were moving into with the, with the construction. So we approached her about, obviously, their, their growing need, our inability to meet that growing need, because one, first and foremost, a lack of, lack of space, and we approached her with, we'd love to do something in meeting your growing demand, but we don't have space. Do you have anything available that we'd be able to grab ahold of, possibly afford on a CNA lab? And she said, well, I sure do. So a few of us from the nursing department, Director Haley, myself, went over to the high school, they actually have two rooms available for us, one where we could carry out the, I think the technical term is the didactic, the lecture.
Classroom.
The classroom piece, and then, of course, the, the lab portion of that CNA. And so, yeah, beautiful space, will meet every need that we, that we have, but in order to carry out the instruction and the classes, we will need to equip that, equip that lab. So that's what we're here for this evening, is to, well, we did prepare a budget, nursing department, I appreciate all their work that they did in doing some comparisons from year to year, going out, they did get some, get some quotes, but we're not asking you to approve that budget, that's an estimation of, of costs. What we're really asking for this evening is more or less approving the, the concept and giving us the approval to go ahead and move forward with pricing out those different, different items and then delivering the instruction there at the, at the Dot City High School, high school campus. So if it's approved this evening, we will begin to move forward immediately on bringing back prices, bids for the items that we will need to equip that, equip that new, that new lab. So that's where we're at this evening, we're really excited about this opportunity, the high school is extremely, what we're extremely excited to, the high school is extremely excited, this is something they've been looking for now for a few, for a few years, and we're right on the cusp of getting able to meet that growing need and really create some synergy between 443 and Dot City Community College by partnering in this, in this way. Any questions?
I think that's really, really neat, I'm so happy about that. Will there be any question about who the equipment belongs to after it gets in their property?
Yeah, we have, it will be the property of Dot City Community College, still in that, at least that was the initial discussion we had with the, with the high school. We wouldn't have to enter into some formal agreement, so there might be some further conversations as it relates to that. The initial discussion was it would still be Dot City Community College.
Well, I, I would like for it to be clear, because sometime there'll be other people there you'll be dealing with. And will there be opportunities for people outside of the high schoolers to be in class?
These courses that we would set up would be specifically for meeting Dot City High School student body demand. We will still have our regular, for lack of a better term, CNA classes here on campus. We have a hybrid course that we offer over in Semarong, which is open to the public at large, but this would be specifically meeting that, that high demand that we have there at Dot City High School. So, yeah, it would be specific to their students.
In Buckland, are you?
And then Buckland, we're looking at, yes, offering a CNA course also in Buckland, but that would be specific to high school students as well.
And this will be under 155?
Yeah, these will be, yes, they'll be 155 courses, qualified as that. CNA classes are six credit hours at a, at a pop, for lack of a better way of saying it, so we'll definitely add some head count, we'll add some credit hours, and then, of course, we'll be meeting a, a demand in the, in the area, which is obviously nice.
And I think we ought to brag about our passion.
So far for 2019, we're at 100%. And have a graduating class, but I'm very, I anticipate.
And Ryan, 443s is still agreeable to provide all the consumables?
So the first, the first year, we will absorb that, that cost, and Jackie and I did have a discussion about moving forward, including some, paying for the consumables and having some of those things included in their budget, yes.
Michelle, you have a waitlist now.
We do, almost 10 students on the waitlist for this year. Last year, last two years, we haven't had a list.
Will there be a possibility of anybody else using the room, any equipment?
That will be set aside specifically for us to carry out that instruction, and we'll be there throughout most of the, the day teaching courses that it's set up with their, with their schedule. So I know, I think I can answer pretty dogmatically that we'll be the only ones using that space or delivering instruction in that. Because it'll be specific, especially that lab, they won't be really be able to do anything else in there but CNA, there'll be beds and some mannequins and other different things like, like that that they'll, that they'll be using.
Do we have grants available for that?
I'm sorry?
Grants available?
Well, we have discussed that we are going to have some needs in the future that are going to be related to CNA and nursing, and we're going to probably set aside some of our Perkins money for that, but at least for this initial cost of equipping the CNA lab, I think Dr. Fordy's already started to encumber some funds, I, I believe, based on your approval. Something to that effect, to that effect. But, but, yeah, it isn't right now, we're not planning on using grant money, but in the future, we know that we're going to have some needs, and we'll set aside some Perkins funds to offset that, or to offset some of that cost.
They aren't going to charge the grant?
No, no, completely, yeah, completely donated, just to, for the partnership.
Just sounds really good.
Yeah, it is, it's excellent, so we're excited. Michelle, generally, thank you.
We have about 80 students that are wanting to take this.
80?
Yeah, so even with the courses that we're putting there, we will have a waitlist even for that, so I think they can, they can, they can go around.
Michelle was able to talk about our program to other, other schools in, in the area, and they were pretty envious of you, and we want to thank the board for what you did for allowing them to, we now are paying nurses what they deserve.
Yes, thank you very much.
Nurse educators.
Yes.
That's so exciting, that's wonderful.
You can't do 80 students at the high school, is that, or can you?
At once, no.
No, I mean, through, rotate throughout one day?
We are, no, there is a state limit on the amount of students that our faculty can have in the clinical setting. Not so much the classroom, as much as the clinical, 10 students per faculty room in the clinical setting at a time, and so we have two cohorts coming in each semester. So that's, at first, it's only 20 students, but if, we have actually talked about possibly doing, because there's two blocks of time that we're doing, figuring out how the instructor can possibly do 20 students in each block and then do their clinical separate, so they can do 20 students in clinical, just not all at once. Or possibly even using CNA to help with that clinical portion of it, to help meet that demand, so.
How long is, is the type of instruction?
In the blocks, I believe it's the hour and a half block, it's the same blocks.
I mean, how many days will it take to?
All, all semester.
All semester, it's a one-semester course?
It's a one-semester.
About an hour and a half a day?
Yes. And we have, we also have another high school class that comes, Lois Seifus teaches that here on campus, and we'll still have that as well, so that is another option, so that's another 10 students as well, so.
And we're going to need additional staff?
We will need additional staff, so we'll be coming back, asking, proposing consideration recommendations to hire other, other CNA insurance firms, we'll bring that next month.
But we'll be getting the 155, no?
Yes, we will. That's a good point.
Michelle, I should know this, what's the capacity for our nursing program right now?
We're approved for 40, but we only accept 30 due to size, just size constraints.
So the CNA program, you have some anticipation for those seeking an R N after this, and so, but what are your thoughts on that?
On being able to grow it from there, I'm hoping that we can, it'll increase the demand, basically. Obviously, we can't increase capacity without more space in the nursing program, and that includes classroom and lab space, because we're having trouble even now getting both of our levels in the lab at the same time, we have to coordinate that. But it'll definitely increase demand for sure, because that is a prerequisite for our, for our program.
So I, I think we'd like to see some, some ideas for what we can do to expand, because I think we need to be prepared for that if this CNA program grows and then, then they seek an R N afterwards, so it's something we'd better plan and be prepared for. So we have 80 students that are interested in the course, but we can really only service about 40 a year, is that correct?
Probably, yeah, 40 to 60 a year.
Yeah, 40 to 60 in the immediate future, but as Director Haley was saying, hopefully we're going to be able to work the schedule, we'll be, we'll be able to add another, another section, and then we'll get really close to meeting that 60 to 80 kind of.
Will it be open to all freshmen through seniors, or is it selective for junior seniors?
That's at the prerogative of each individual high school, kind of what's grade level they will allow to enroll. The board of regents regs are, as a freshman, you can begin to take incurable enrollment classes, but you have to be on an IEP. Some high schools let in sophomore, junior, seniors, Dot City High School really focuses on juniors and, and seniors.
Is there an age that you need to be to get your CNA?
We need 16.
16?
Yeah, I need 60, yeah.
It's, it's interesting that we had, out of our last graduating class, and Michelle, let me know if I'm giving the wrong numbers, but out of our last graduating class, 60% of those of our students were vowing, and out of that 60%, I don't think any of them ended up staying here, did they?
Some did.
Some did?
This, that class in particular had more of them that went out of the area in state than other classes. I mean, we have students in Denver, we have students in, which is actually, I know it leads to this area, but it's kind of exciting that our students are competing with new graduates from big programs in other states, and so that says a lot about our graduates. There's some in Wichita and Salina and Kansas City and Denver, so.
Our, our goals, futuristically, for the university center is to go ahead and have PAs and things like that, so, you know, obviously, Dr. Pressley can tell you about the shortage of, of doctors and things like that here, and so we need to make sure that we're working to help this community have, as we all get a little older, just a little older, we want to make sure we have good healthcare, and we want to make sure we have a good healthcare here. Because I worry about people leaving the community to get good healthcare, or get healthcare, period. And, I mean, if you try to get into the dermatology, it takes like six months, you know, and so there's, there's opportunities for us to, to work with, you know, PAs and all the other things that we can get on there.
Did you just move over here when you talked about older?
Fast you.
I did not. I was looking.
I know you're looking at it.
I was looking at the pictures on the wall.
I'm not going to sit and stand here.
I move approval of this.
Second. Second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
And congratulations, I think that move is phenomenal.
This is great, great work. Director Haley? Director Haley? While you're here, I'd like to take opportunity on behalf of the board to just extend our thanks and praise for the great job that the nursing department, you and your staff are doing.
That is wonderful.
All right. Next up, the Sunflower Community Garden lease. We have item M. Do you have it?
Yes. Where is it?
M.
M.
M, yeah, right here. No, it's fine, you can move. All right. So, Glenn, would you like to take over?
Yes. Item M includes the various leases and addendums that we've had with the Sunflower Community Garden. As all of you, I think, know, currently, we do not have a written lease in place, and so the idea is to get a written lease in place. And so you have the original lease, you have an addendum that was made in 2013, the addendum to the original lease, and then trustee Malone took, not to speak for you, Terry, but I think took the old lease, kind of made some markings and suggested changes, and so we typed those up, and so Malone's proposed lease is, is, is his lease. And then the last is, is the lease that I have prepared based on some feedback that I've received over the last few months with, with regard to what is being looked for in a lease with Sunflower Community Garden. I might just highlight some points, is that okay, Mr. Chairman? This lease, as opposed to the original lease, does not include anything about an orchard. And there's, there was, there was concern about having an orchard planted in an area that at some point in time might be used, and so this, this lease takes the orchard out, and in fact, specifically prohibits that unless the board should approve it at some future point in time. The original lease was for a term of three years, and then had the option for... The original lease was for a term of three years, and then had the option for a second three-year period, and that was the end of it. This lease, uh, that I've drafted is for a one-year period beginning in the first of May, and then it will automatically renew, uh, for successive one-year terms unless either party gives notice to end it, so it, it will just roll from year to year, uh, unless either party decides that they, uh, want to terminate the lease. The responsibilities are similar to what the, uh, original lease provided for, uh, one thing that, uh, I would highlight, uh, that, uh, is item F under four, which is part of the Sunflower Community Garden responsibilities, and that's, uh, the, the construction of a chain link fence around the garden area, and I don't think that's ever happened, I think it's been provided for, but I don't think that has ever happened. Then, um, it specifically requires, uh, as the old lease did, consent and approval by the college of any kind of, uh, design, construction, maintenance of improvements that would be made to the, uh, to the garden, the community garden, uh, so those would have to be approved by the college before anything is done, the same is true of permanent structures, any permanent structures would have to be approved by the board of trustees. Uh, it also, uh, includes a provision about dress, uh, that, uh, that, you know, that community garden would be responsible for making sure everyone is fully clothed and appropriately dressed, uh, you know, how gardeners are, so, uh, that provision was added.
Were there any plumber-type complaints or?
Well, I think it's the hat you wear out there, Terry, that's probably, probably gonna get a few, a little scrutiny.
Dr. Fergie has one example.
Yeah, same goes for Dr. Fergie. And then, uh, it includes the insurance provision, which has been in the prior lease, and which I think at the present time, we have proof that the Sunflower Community Garden has insurance in place, uh, for, uh, for liability purposes.
And you didn't, Glenn, I don't know if the other one stated it, but that's a million-dollar policy.
Yeah, it, you know, that's true, neither, I don't think any of them have identified the amount, but that's, and then the, the garden is, or the, the, uh, the, the corporation has provided to us each year a certificate of that insurance to show that it's in place and that, uh, Dot City Community College is, is named as an additional insured on the policy. So that's, that's what we have to work from, and so.
All right, thank you.
I have one, I may be caught, sorry, but I have one for sure, on the high-quality chain link fence, is that gonna be so expensive that?
It would, it would be not doable, uh, give you some, the reason that, I think they got in there in the first place was the, uh, at the Division Garden, which is much, much smaller, Sister Rosemary and, uh, others got busy on that, I think about two thousand five and got, and they put a fence around it with donations, please from Wendy's and, uh, maybe Victory Electric, but I'd say it's very small, and, uh, it doesn't keep people out, uh, it doesn't keep animals out, and then when we looked into it, we, I guess we thought that we just needed a fence, but, uh, that's why it was put in there, a bit of this, it'd be like eleven hundred running feet, so it'd be well over, like the last, when I looked at it the first time, it was seven or eight thousand dollars, which would be impossible for the, uh, garden to do, they, we have about two thousand dollars in the bank, and that goes to, uh, lots of things, uh, and we, that's, usually have about two thousand dollars in the bank, so the, uh, that would be, yeah, like an impossible situation. The orchard, uh, those would last, I think, anywhere from twenty to twenty-five years, uh, if there are plans for that property, uh, that might not be, uh, the best place to put one, uh, the city is helping with that, so we, uh, might be able to, uh, locate another area that would be suitable, uh, the only advantage I think I saw it having was it creates, it would create kind of a barrier, or a barrier, uh, on the south side, which might be more attractive or make it less attractive on the, uh, at times during the year when, uh, things are dying.
I don't see anything wrong with putting an orchard in, as long as there's an understanding that if, if it came down to the college needing to use that land, then the orchard was going to go away, you know, and if it, if it doesn't need the land, then the orchard stays as long as, as we don't need it, I, I think, I think a great barrier, and I really don't see the purpose in having the chain link fence there either, uh, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't serve a purpose of keeping anybody out, it doesn't serve a purpose of keeping animals out, I'm sure, I just don't see the purpose of going to the expense of building a, you know, six, ten thousand dollar fence there, it doesn't, it doesn't serve a purpose at all, and, and I think we could work around, the city wants to donate trees and the irrigation for the orchard, I just think we could put in an understanding that the orchard can go in, but if we need that property, the orchard's coming out, you know, and without a lot of crying, crying and whining about it, it's just gonna come out, so.
The, the discussion that, that was on the trees was, yes, you can have that understanding that the trees come out, but I don't think anybody wants to really, in southwest Kansas, tear out a tree, and so the whole premise was to make sure that we didn't do anything that would tie the hands of future trustees, and so even though there is that understanding, there's still that moral component that, that we would not want to put those trustees in that position to make that tough decision, and that's a tough decision, and I think that was the, the genesis and the rationale for, for the trees, is just, that would just make it a very hard decision for future trustees to want to uproot those trees, and as far as the fence, I think it was, the idea of the fence is just some marker of what that leased property is, just for people to know that it is somewhat separate from the college, and there's a reason for it, so they have some of their own autonomy somewhat, and if a simple, like pipe, nice pipe with a cable just strung across, if something simple just to mark the, the confines of the garden, I, I would be fine with that.
I would too, I would hate to see the community garden not be here over, over a fence, that would be.
Right.
Tragic to me, the, the community garden is a wonderful thing.
And it's, it's just something simple to mark, that, that's attractive, that, and doesn't have to be over the top, it's something that marks the, the leased property and, and what the community garden is, that would satisfy my concern.
So we would take out that, about a high-quality chain link fence?
Gary, are you talking about completely around, or just maybe on that south side, or south and east side? I mean, they, no one comes in from the west anymore.
Agreed.
I do.
Yes, you do, sorry about that.
Um, just, I kinda leave that open, Terry, 'cause it's, to me, it's just a, like, marking, this is the community garden, and so then people.
Parking's on the east, right?
Yeah, and so I, I think. And there's, uh, right now, if you notice, there's like four concrete parking blocks that someone put, or they've ordered the garden, but those are being moved to the parking area, uh, within the week, I hope.
Just something that marks the leased property so that everybody knows that this is, this is the.
I think we could turn up with some proposals.
Okay, that, that would satisfy my.
I have a question about if it goes on the south side, excuse me, I'm already there, there's a good enough room.
I, we may be talking about two, uh, uh, you know, there's the ground, the tilted ground, and then that area in the south to that, what are you talking about?
That's closer to the road.
Yeah, right.
Buffalo grass area in there, buffer in there.
I mean, what are you talking about?
Well, if the trees get, look good, you know, how much room is there for trees?
Oh, they're not, uh, these are the semi-dwarf trees.
Oh, okay.
So they're not, they're not gonna be tall, I mean, they're not gonna be the twenty-five foot trees, they'll be the ten, ten to twelve foot.
And another question, we are, excuse me, we are now responsible for mowing the area?
Well, no, I mean, we're respons, uh, the college has, excuse me, has always mowed to the south and to the west of it, and then that area to the, by the trees, uh, we're responsible for doing the rest of it.
Is there also a way, I'm just asking, there's also a way to not have that sign that says, "Do not trespass," I mean, you know?
Yes, I, I noticed.
Students come, students come on the campus and they see that, "Do not trespass," and it's hard to describe it very well, that's, that's.
Yeah, I think.
Because you don't have it up front.
I think that goes along with what Gary is saying, is some sort of a marker or border, and I, I, well, Glenn knows how I put things together, if I'm working with a hammer, anyway, uh, those went up and they look pretty shoddy because the rods stick up about four feet more than that, so that was done and, and out of time I had to do it, and then Kathy raised that idea, and, so, yeah, I think that we should, um, uh, figure out a, just a sign that says, uh, um, Sunflower Community Garden, uh, you know, and, uh, something like that.
That would be great.
Private garden space, that would be great.
I, you know.
It doesn't have to say, "Do not interrupt."
We really haven't had to, I mean, uh, yeah, there's a lot of security, they have a lot more trouble on the Division Garden with people taking things than we do, we had a little spurt there that people just didn't know.
Well, I think we could visit with our security and let them know that students aren't supposed to be out there and.
So Terry, you, you mentioned that there may be the city, you may be able to talk with the city, try to work something out for a different location for the orchard.
I, uh, yeah, I, we've talked about, well, we've talked about putting another garden over by, on St. Mary's, to the, that area to the, uh, east of the ballpark, but, so, and, uh, just never had any money to develop it, so that might be a possible.
All right, and just, again, I mean, I think it's a better location, there's no street planning or, you know, possible talk of a street ever going through there, as Gary is saying, we all, we're all western Kansas, we don't wanna cut down a tree, we don't have.
I mean, actually, uh, we've looked for other areas and, uh, you know, in, in one of the parks, it may be, uh, possible to.
I noticed that Sutherland's would put in some pine trees, and maybe Sutherland's would be open to, uh, sharing some land to put in an orchard back, back close to where it was, you know?
If they didn't see, I mean, they may not have, I'm serious, they may not have kind, kind of.
Sounds like they're gonna put in some.
You're, you're right.
They're gonna put in some trees, seven, what, seventy-five pine trees or something?
Maybe, you know, that irrigation system is still there.
That ruined my plan, though, I want you to know, because I've already talked to Jennifer Nolan about it, I said, "I've got a great idea for that great building over there, let's just, let's just do some murals on those walls," to talk to, in fact, I called Sutherland, and I said, "How about let us paint the walls?" And I had response back, "No."
I have to say, "How about not?"
You, you think of that, that, that north wall, and if you could put a really attractive mural on there, it'd be something to be facing our campus, and it'd, it'd look great.
It'd be PR for the college.
It'd be great PR.
Have the art class change it every year.
Well.
Other students every.
That's not the Jennifer, it's, it's a beautiful word.
Anyway.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna bring out, so.
Are we gonna get this worked out?
I, yeah, I think so, I mean, that's why we're having this discussion, to see what's up.
I want to ask another question, we are responsible for mowing, now, fruit trees need to be trimmed and sprayed, what are we gonna do?
We're not doing trees.
We're not discussing the trees, they're gonna look for a different place for the trees.
Have we decided that?
I think that's the direction.
That's the general consensus, uh, that's the way I took it.
Okay.
I'm gonna go looking for another spot, uh, but the, we, we prun and, uh, spray, but, uh.
I just don't wanna leave any questions.
So right now, the only thing I'm hearing is the fence, and I can only speak for myself here, but I'm, I'm fine with that, that altercation, that alter, yeah.
That altercation.
That alternative, there is that title, that alternative plan, here we go.
All right, I will put together some ideas with pictures or whatever, and, uh, bring it back, and I'll take this up with the board, too.
So then we will just modify that paragraph on the fence.
And then we'll, we'll bring it back to, to the board in May, is that what you think, Terry?
I'll do that, and then, but for now, I, I'm just simply worried about having people on the property and not having some agreement, it's just, got a liability to the school, so if we have a verbal agreement, then I think that would suffice for now.
Right.
Okay, so I think we have a verbal agreement on, on the community garden, and, uh, we'll have this back, uh, and look at that proposal on the thing, so I guess, then a verbal agreement will suffice.
This will let those gardeners get started over there, because it's past time.
Well, it looks nice now.
Precisely. There was some guy with a dozer earlier, just.
A what? Yeah, they've been done quite a bit of work, getting the ground in better shape.
Well, I just saw that, oh.
Terry, do you know, Terry, you know that the insurance, is the insurance certificate still in place, the insurance certificate, you sent that to the business owners?
Yeah, it was one year, and remarkably cheap, thank goodness.
And it's still, it's still in force?
Yep.
Okay.
I did, you know, I, I had to, that, that, I missed the date, but I had a grace period, so, uh, but, yeah, that's one thing that the city is covered by and also the college.
Okay, that, that was my, really my main concern, is if we had people out there and something would happen that no, no harm would fall to the college, so I think we're good, and then we'll look for that in, in May, all right. Okay, um, that, no one finished business, new business, we are taming it to, till, but I think you'll put in a minute, we had a verbal, uh, agreement on a lease, insurance, with insurance, and, uh, we're good, so, um, I'm gonna have a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
So moved.
Second?
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay, now we will move into our first executive session, so I'll have our attorney, Mr. Curbs, take us into executive session.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss non-renewal of faculty employment contracts pursuant to the personnel matters involving non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B three, the open, I'm sorry, that should be B one, the open meeting to resume in this location at seven forty-two P M, in addition to the trustees, the president, human resources director, Oshweger, the college attorney, vice president, Huarda, vice president Fergie, and Dean Osmus should be included in the executive session.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And then second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are now into executive session until seven forty-two. Okay, we are now back in, uh, general session, and there was action taken in our executive session, all, let Mr. Curbs describe.
Okay, actually, we have action to come from our executive session, and, uh, first recommendation is approval of resolution number twenty nineteen zero three, a resolution of intent to non-renew the faculty employment contract of Jason Laskowski.
Okay.
You wanna take both resolutions at the same time?
Same time.
Okay, and secondly, uh, I recommend approval of resolution number twenty nineteen zero four, a resolution of intent to non-renew the faculty employment contract of Brian Yeager.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Well, we can't afford that kind of, you know, that we're paying for.
Agreed, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. All right, now we will need to go back into executive session number two, let Mr. Curbs take us into executive session.
Yeah, I think, there's actually some people probably think that we're just extending, is that right outside, or do you wanna go ahead, just go ahead?
I think go ahead, but we're down to what we're doing, we're going into a second executive session.
Okay.
But are we now, or the?
We'll let him come in, let him come in, because they might.
Talk first before we go.
No, we're gonna go into executive session, and then the board, the board will decide. No, we're gonna go into executive session, and then the board, the board will decide when to bring Hopkins in. You know, I think first we move without him, and then he can come in, I think, that way we can talk about...
Yeah, I think that we're fine, we can advise about him.
Yeah.
We are back in, and in general session, and that we will need to recess into executive session number two. Uh, Mr. Curves will take us into executive session number two.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss non-renewal of faculty employment contracts as they relate to elimination of programs pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 7543-19B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 8:10 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, human resources director, Oshweger, the college attorney, vice president, Huarda, vice president, Forgy, and Dean Osmus should be included in the executive session. Danny Hopkins shall also be included in part of the executive session.
Do I have a motion to take us into executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now into executive session until 8:10. Okay, we are now back in regular session, but we will need to extend this executive session, so I'll turn it over to our attorney, Glenn Curves.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board extend the executive session to discuss non-renewal of faculty employment contracts as they relate to the elimination of programs pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 7543-19B1. The open meeting to resume in this location at 8:30 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, human resources director, Oshweger, the college attorney, vice president, Huarda, vice president, Forgy, uh, Dean Osmus, and Danny Hopkins shall be included in the executive session.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now into executive session until 8:30. Okay, we are now back into general session, and we will need to go back into executive session for another roughly fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Take us into executive session.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to continue to discuss non-renewal of faculty employment contracts as they relate to the elimination of programs pursuant to the personnel matters of non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 7543-19B1. The open meeting to resume, uh, in this location at 8:52 PM. In addition to the trustees, the president, human resources director, Oshweger, the college attorney, vice president, Huarda, vice president, Forgy, and Dean Osmus should be included in the executive session.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are now back in the executive session until 8:52. We are now back into general session, and there is action to be taken, and I will pass it off to our attorney, Glenn Curves.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd make a recommendation, the board eliminate the automotive technology program effective at the end of this school year, 2018, 2019.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I move.
You move? Is there a second?
A second.
And a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Carlos here, yes. Okay, next up?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend the board adopt resolution 2019-05, a resolution of intent to non-renew the faculty employment contract of Stanley Senko.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next up?
Mr. Chairman, I'd recommend the board adopt resolution number 2019-06, a resolution of intent to non-renew the faculty employment contract of Jeffrey Cole.
Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, next up?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board eliminate the electrical power technology program at the conclusion of the 2018-2019 school year.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Next up?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board approve resolution number 2019-07, a resolution of intent to non-renew the faculty employment contract of Danny Hopkins.
Is there a motion?
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. All right, we will now need to go back into executive, we'll go into executive session number three, and I will turn it over back over to Mr. Curves.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board recess into executive session to discuss non-renewal of a faculty employment contract pursuant to the personnel matters involving non-elected personnel exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA 7543-19B1. The open meeting to resume, uh, in this location at 9:20 PM. Uh, in addition to the trustees, the president, human resources director, Oshweger, the college attorney, vice president, Huarda, vice president, Forgy, and Dean Osmus should be included in the executive session.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.